We're gonna do things a little different this morning. We've got a special guest, Mr. Armon Kirkendall, who was the Spelling Bee champion for Putnam County in 2019. So I'm gonna ask him to bang the gavel and we'll begin our meeting. Armon, will you hit the gavel? Hit it hard. Okay. Thank you. You're a natural. So, anyway, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Meeting for July 23rd, 2019. I'd like to welcome everybody. We'll begin our meeting by asking Michael Hudson, the pastor of Christ Independent Methodist Church, to come forward to deliver our invocation, and Commissioner Buddy Goddard will lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we know, dear Lord, that you are the Lord of lords, the King of kings, the great I am. We praise your holy name. And Father, we thank you for another day that you've given to us. We know, dear Lord, that every day is a gift from thee. It's an opportunity, dear Lord, that we might show your love toward others, that we might be an example before the ones, dear Lord, that we come in contact, that we might exemplify the love of our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Father, we pray, dear Lord, that you will continue to bless our community. We love our community. And I pray, Father, that your hand of blessing would be upon each one. Father, I pray, dear Lord, that you will be with our commissioners as they govern our county. I pray, dear Lord, that you'll give them a wisdom that can only come from thee. Father, I pray, dear Lord, that you will also give them a compassion, and that you'll give them the patience that they need as they govern. May you bless them in their ministry and their service to our county. And Father, may you continue to watch over us, take care of us, bless our nation. We pray these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Armon, and also Pastor Hudson and Commissioner Goddard. Commissioners, we have item two on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I move for approval.
I second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I had forgotten to push my button fast enough. That's why he beat me on that.
Okay.
This isn't a game show.
Yeah, right? Okay, this time I'd like to turn it over to Administrator Terry Suggs to make a couple of announcements.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to take the opportunity this morning to introduce our new county attorney, Mr. Joseph DeNovo. As you know, Mr. DeNovo comes to us by way of Hernando County. Mr. DeNovo brings a wealth of experience in local government work. He brings a land development background. He brings a little bit of Port Authority as well. I think we're gonna be very fortunate to have Mr. DeNovo on staff and looking forward to a long-term relationship with our new county attorney and our Board of County Commissioners and the citizens of Putnam County. So I just want to take the opportunity to welcome him here this morning.
Okay, welcome. Okay, I'd like to, Joe, to present you with a Putnam County pen that hopefully will oil proudly while you're with us, and hopefully that they took care of the situation of you not being able to get in the building yesterday and gave you a key. So, anyway, I want to give this to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have one more announcement if I can go ahead and make that this morning, and it's about our Commissioner, Mr. Larry Harvey. As we all know, Commissioner Harvey serves on the Board for the Florida Association of Counties Trust. Mr. Harvey also serves as the rural Chair of the Rural Issues for Florida Association of Counties. And today I'd like to extend the congratulations to Commissioner Harvey for once again being appointed to the Board of Directors for the Florida Association of Counties. That appointment came from Mr. Nick Maddox, who is the president. So I'd like to take the opportunity here this morning to congratulate Commissioner Harvey for serving for Putnam County and our citizens, and for what you do for us around the state of Florida. So, thank you, sir, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on up. Harvey, you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's just an honor to serve, you know, the residents of Putnam County and to be able to take our issues up to a higher level. And we've done that, I believe, ever since I've been here, and I'd encourage every Commissioner to do that. You know, nothing's new. I've learned that in county government. All other counties have been through what we've been through or are going to go through, and we can learn from each other. And it's just a really great opportunity to serve with a bunch of great people, and I appreciate this board allowing me the opportunity to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for your service. Okay, we'll move down to recognitions. And this is especially, it's special for me because Armon and his family reside in District One, and, but he represented the whole county.
What equipment is?
But he represented the whole county. Armon Kirkendall is the 2019 Putnam County Spelling Bee champion and participated in the 75th Annual First Coast Regional Spelling Bee. And he is just in the fifth grade. He has promoted to the sixth grade, so I think that's quite an accomplishment. So if I ask Becky and Kim Horn and Armon to come up to the podium, I'd like to give a recognition, okay? When I saw that the county Spelling Bee champion, I didn't really recognize Armon because I've never met him before. But in the background of the picture, I did recognize his parents, Kim and Becky Horn. And Kim had been a customer of mine, and we've actually had some dealings as me being a county commissioner in his area with some drainage and stuff like that. So, anyway, when I saw that Armon had won, I reached out to Kim, and I said, "I think that's fantastic." And I said, "I'd like to recognize his achievement at one of the Board of County Commission meetings." He said, "I think that would be special." He said, "Well, let's just wait till after the regional spelling bee." And so we did. And then Commissioner Pickens dragged his feet a little bit, so here we are in July to recognize him. Armon is artistic and has overcome many challenges doing that. Armon also has other hobbies. He loves fishing, geography, and his latest hobby is origami. Is that correct?
Origami.
Origami. Okay, correct me. Thank you. Since I didn't do well- Can you spell that? I didn't do well in the spelling bee. I can spell it because I, but my brother is a pronouncer. That is my brother who pronounces all the words. It's my older brother. So, anyway, he did well in spelling bee. So, since age four, he has worn out three globes, several atlases. He routes out every trip that we go on, no matter how small, and usually has the routes and important addresses memorized. As a matter of fact, your conversation with Becky, he came in with the address to the government complex and even told us where we could park. And I hope you did not park in Julie Holmes Young's parking spot because she might, she might get mad. So, each summer, we try to plan daily activities for Armon. And if you haven't been involved with the autistic children, you know a schedule is a must. He had all these crafts and little projects planned out for him this summer. And one of the things he focused on was origami. Book with his teacher, Stephanie Wright, gave him the last day of school. We have now probably the most extensive collection of figures in the state of Florida. Teachers like her along with Susan, Susanna Bender, Laura White, and Michelle Knowles have enabled Armon to be a success. Without them, none of Armon's goals would have been possible. Like I said, he did represent Putnam County in the regional. He did not win, but I know he's already practicing for next year. But on the Board, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, myself and our staff, I'd like to give this certificate of recognition presented to Armon Kirkendall for his outstanding achievement in winning the 2019 Putnam County Spelling Bee and participation in the 75th Annual First Coast Regional Spelling Bee this day, July 23rd, 2019. Congratulations. You get to keep that and put it with all your other trophies that you're gonna win. And here's your personal Putnam County pen, and hope you'll wear that when you represent Putnam County, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Would y'all like to say a few things, Ms. Becky or Kim?
Just real quick. We spent a lot of time getting him ready for this, but you know what? He was the one coming to us seconds off the school bus. I gotta do my words. I gotta do my words. But I mentioned quite a few teachers there, and I want to say without those four particular teachers, he wouldn't have made it through first grade. You know, being autistic, so many people don't realize how that affects children, where they might not necessarily be, are trying to be bad. It's just that's how they see things. And I'd like to appreciate you guys for honoring him this way. I mean, we were hoping that he would get through the first round of the county competition. We had, we had no idea we would be going to Jacksonville and, you know, him representing the county at the First Coast Spelling Bee. And I just want to thank you all again for recognizing him. This is something I'll never forget, and I'm sure he won't either.
Congratulations. Any comments, Commissioners?
I get our picture.
Yeah, we would like to get some pictures. And we all have, we have some of his work here that he has done, so you can take a look at that. But anyway, if y'all want to come up, we'll get some pictures, okay? And, Armon, I have to, I'm gonna give this to your parents so people don't think you're already receiving royalties for your success. So I'm gonna give this to your parents, but it's actually for you. This is a hundred dollar gift certificate from the Board of County Commissioners. And I just got a gift certificate because I see you fish, but I also know you like to go to Corky's Bell, so you'll have to decide how you're gonna spend this, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item number four. It is after 9:10, so we have a solid waste collection and disposal district public hearing. So I open a public hearing and need approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, July 24th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Okay, we got a proper motion?
I'll second.
Are any of the mayors here?
Yeah, I don't see them, so can we?
Okay.
So we can still do it?
Yes.
Were the mayors notified, Mr. Chairman, that we were gonna have?
I thought that they said that they were. Did you have any response from them, Laura?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that was Lynn with sanitation. Okay, Jay, I don't put you on the spot. Do you have any idea if there was any correspondence back?
They were all sent letters.
Okay. We can continue, then?
We can.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to-
Mr. Chairman, we need to open the public hearing.
Okay. All right. I'd like to open the public hearing portion of this meeting for the solid waste collection and disposal district. Do we need public comment? Russ?
Well, I think there's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a second. We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, I'll open up the public comment portion. Is any people wishing to speak about the solid waste district? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. And item B, adopt a resolution setting the solid waste assessment and user fees for 2019, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval as presented.
Second.
Okay. All right, we got a proper motion, got a proper second.
Mr. Reynolds was well-prepared this morning.
I was gonna get some exercise, Matt, or something.
Oh, sir, I was just coming to-
I was gonna ask either-
We read our packet.
Mr. Fowler, but for the general public, Matt, will you go over what we're about to approve?
Sure, absolutely. Every year, by ordinance, the Board is required to establish by resolution the solid waste special assessments and user fees prior to the beginning of each fiscal year, and we typically do this in July. This year, the rates for countywide, people who do not live in Palaca or Crescent City, their assessment will be decreasing by $2, from $331 for the year, down to $329. For those residents that live inside Palaca and Crescent City, theirs will decrease by $1, $220 a year. That's a decrease of a dollar from this current year. So, just a brief recap of those user fees.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Reynolds?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to make a comment if I could. I realize that losing a dollar last year and a couple of dollars this year is not very much, but we are aggressively working towards trying to do a little better, and hopefully things are starting to come together now that we have a solid waste director and we're working on some of those issues. So I look forward, hopefully, to next year having a significant reduction in the landfill side of it. We're never gonna get rid of the collection side. We've got to pay somebody to collect our garbage, and, you know, maybe there may, there may be a small reduction on the recycling side, but it could actually go up because some of this, we don't have a lot of control over. So, but the landfill side of it, hopefully we can see a reduction next year. That's what I'm challenging my young friend with out there, the king of trash. Isn't that what the paper called him? So anyhow, I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got a comment, request. Echoing what Mr. Turner just said, you know, with an increase in cost of doing business every year, you know, holding the line and lowering the price a little bit is meaningful. And I hope the public doesn't look at it just as a reduction by a dollar, but it's also that we were able to hold the line for another year, which is not reflecting an increase. Our cost of doing business has gone up.
That's correct. Exactly. Okay, I agree with both Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Rawls. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a proper motion to accept by, I believe, Commissioner Harvey. Okay, we got a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Is that correct?
I believe it was Commissioner Rawls.
Mr. Rawls. Okay. All right, so we've got a proper motion, a proper second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, it passes. Okay, I'll close the public hearing portion of this meeting, and we'll move down to public, number five, public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation on matters on which the Board has received no prior information on the agenda. Please limit your comment to three minutes. We would appreciate if you would fill out a public comment card. They're available in the entrance and exit of our building, and if you'll give them to Sarah Oliver to my left, to your right. Do we have any people wishing to do public comment? I have no cards here. John?
I have to fill out a card.
That's fine. You can just come up. John, if you would, state your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone.
My name is John Chapman. I live at 107 Myrtlewood Point in East Palaca. I'm here representing the Volunteer Firefighter Council of Putnam County. The reason I'm here, and I've spoken to Commissioner Goddard about it being an email, we are in desperate need for the volunteers to get what's the position filled of the Volunteer Firefighter Coordinator. That position died with Katrina Flynn when she passed away, and it has not been filled. Now, Jean Morgante has done a wonderful job trying to fill in, but the man's wearing seven hats, so while we know he's doing the best he can, he's just overwhelmed. So I know it's budget season. All we're asking as the council is that you please consider adding into the budget a salary for the Volunteer Firefighter Coordinator. Speaking with Chief Quinn Romey, he said that there is no money in the budget for that position at this time. That's all I have.
How long, John, how long has, I know Katrina passed away. How long has this been?
About two years now.
Has it been that long? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, was the position funded prior?
Say again?
Was the position funded prior?
It was funded prior, to my knowledge, yes.
And what happened that? Was it taken out accidentally, or?
That was, that was your prior to my arrival. We'll look into it, and we'll get back with the gentleman once I have more information.
Wonderful, thank you.
There's not been an interim, or, he said somebody was doing-
Yeah, Jean has been, Jean is the educational coordinator and several other jobs, and he's kind of picked up the hat along with Joy, and I can't think of Joy's last name. I apologize. But, pardon me? Thank you, Joy Johnson. They have been doing a wonderful job, but it's just a little bit overwhelming. The council came together and presented, we've had, Commissioner Goddard stepped forward and asked to represent us. We have been communicating via email and everything else. We had a list of things that we would like to be addressed so that we can bring the volunteer stations into accord, so that we work as one unit rather than, you know, 23, 24 individual units. So, any help you can grant us on this position, that's step one. If we can get that volunteer coordinator position filled, then from that point, we can begin to move forward on our other agendas.
Would it be possible to get this council on a workshop agenda? I think, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about the importance of volunteer firefighters in Putnam County and moving forward, getting some younger folks to be able to come in and volunteer. And eventually, we're gonna have to do something because the level of service we provide right now is not up to par where it needs to be. So we need to be able to get our response times reduced, manpower showing up, and, you know, we're struggling with our budget this year, obviously, but volunteerism is extremely important in Putnam County, especially when it comes to fire service. And so I personally would like to see, see us meet with your council at a workshop where we can all sit around and start noodling through some-
I would be more than happy to do that. I can also send the list of our dream sheets, so to speak, to all of the Commissioners if you would like.
But with your dream sheet, send the solutions with it.
Okay.
You guys know what the answers are. We just, we need to hear the answers, not the problems, and-
Well, we actually have some ideas to cut the budget a little bit, going to a central supply system. All of this, by the way, is supported by Chief Romey at EOC. So, everything that we've sent him, he is in favor of. It's just a question of coordinating. Plus, the county has been hiring paid people, and surprisingly, people think there's an animosity between the paid people and the volunteers, and that's not true. The volunteers work well with the paid people, and we understand, because of lack of recruitment, that the paid people have to fill in for us when we're either at work or unavailable to respond. And there are stations out there right now that only have two or three people. The volunteer coordinator position, part of their job is to recruit. So that's why we think this is probably the most important thing on our dream sheet.
John, would you, Mr. Chairman, if I may, who is the liaison right now between the volunteers and the EMS department?
Me. I'm also the chaplain for the county. I have a good, for fire EMS, I have a good working relationship with Chief Romey, and as I've said, he is very favorable to almost everything on our dream sheet. He's trying to keep things running on the paid side, to hire new paid guys, to keep our equipment running, plus keep us functioning. So he also is wearing many hats. So they kind of hired me in the middle. I should say, I volunteered in the middle to act as coordinator between paid side and volunteer side.
Okay. Well, maybe we can get the research done and see where that fell beside the road at.
Yeah.
Would be very beneficial to all of us, I think.
Okay. I think I can speak for all of us when I say that this is an extremely important issue for this commission and for the county as a whole. There's, it's a service that we need to provide. We have to provide, and we really need to get the citizens behind us on this and come up with a solution to fill the voids.
I think you'll find that you'll get no argument for paid or volunteer side. We know that our call-response times have been increasing, that many stations are not responding to any calls because all their people are at work. So we basically need to address the problem, and quickly, because we don't want the citizens of this county to suffer.
I'm in. Okay. All right, John.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting, and we'll move down to item six, the consent agenda. And before I go to the Commissioners, I'll turn it over to Administrator Suggs to pull a couple of items.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, good morning again. I'd like to pull items E and F from the consent agenda for further discussion. We'll, if that will be the will of the Commissioner, I'll go ahead and get a motion to do that, and we'll talk about those items separately.
Mr. Chairman, I move to pull items E and F from the agenda.
We got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, E and F will be discussed later. Okay, we'll move down to the rest of the consent agenda, and any Commissioners wishing to pull an item? And I'll start with Commissioner Goddard.
I have none.
Okay. Commissioner Rawls?
None.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull aye.
Okay, and I'd like to pull H. Excuse me, J, just for some clarification. Okay, can we get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, which would be A, B, C, D, G, H, K, L, M, N, and O, and P?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Sound like a chorus. Okay, we've got a proper motion by-
Not a good load.
Commissioner Turner and a second by Commissioner Harvey. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item aye. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was noticing when I reviewed this request that there was only one, 1.8 points between one and two. So I would like to request that we set a budget on this of $125,000. According to our purchasing ordinance, that will allow our general services director to enter into negotiations with the first pick and see if they would do it for the budgeted amount of 125, and if not, they can enter into the second one, which is only 1.8 point behind. So that would be my recommendation. I would like to move that we set a budget of $125,000 to get this item taken care of.
Okay.
I have any question?
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Suggs, is this funded by DEO?
No, sir.
No, sir. The, this money will come out of the general fund, and we budgeted dollars for this for this coming year. We have applied for a grant that will help cover some of the costs. We have not heard back from that grant yet.
Oh, we had, I have a motion on the floor. Did it die from lack of a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll second for discussion. So we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Rawls.
Under, under discussion, Mr. Chairman, the only, the only reason I see a difference here is that I think we can get it done for that amount of money, and both people are qualified within 1.8 of one another. I actually asked for legal advice on this. Could we go to number two? And that was not what I was recommended to do. It was recommended to set a budget cap, let them go to the, to the number one selected member by the committee, and then that would give them the opportunity to go to our budget. And I think that's what my, in that nutshell, what I was advised. Okay. All right, so that's what, that's how I got where I was. Thank you.
One question I would have is, is that using the other bidder's number to negotiate the price down? I mean, could they-
The other bidder was lower than that, yes. And I'm sorry, but if there was, you know, I was gonna try to do this short and sweet as I can, but-
So I would like to request that we set a budget on this of $125,000. According to our purchasing ordinance, that will allow our general services director to enter into negotiations with the first pick and see if they would do it for the budgeted amount of 125, and if not, they can enter into the second one, which is only 1.8 point behind. So that would be my recommendation. I would like to move that we set a budget of $125,000 to get this item taken care of.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Mr. Suggs, is this funded by DEO?
No, sir.
No, sir, the, this money will come out of general fund and we budgeted dollars for this for this coming year. We have applied for a grant that will help cover some of the costs. We have not heard back from that grant yet.
Oh, we had, I have a motion on the floor, did it die from lack of a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll second for discussion. So we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Rawls.
Under discussion, Mr. Chairman, the, the only reason I see a difference here is that I think we can get it done for that amount of money and both people are qualified within 1.8 of one another. I actually asked for legal advice on this. Could we go to number two? And that was not what I was recommended to do. It was recommended to set a budget cap, let them go to the, to the number one selected member by the committee and then that would give them the opportunity to go to our budget. And I think that's what my, in a nutshell, what I was advised. Okay, all right, so that's what, that's how I got where I was. Thank you.
One question I would have is, is that using the other bidder's number to negotiate the price down? I mean, could they?
The other bidder was lower than that, yes. And I'm sorry, but if there was, you know, I was going to try to do this short and sweet as I can, but try to keep them getting in trouble. I don't have the ability not to do that most of the time, so I guess my problem with it is there was five people that turned in a bid. The third person was 60 points down. The fourth one was even further, as much as 100 or more down. I understand when you don't select one of them, but when you have somebody that's 316.4 and somebody else that's 314.6, there's 1.8 point between those two. So with that being the case, I have a hard time spending an extra $21,000 or $19,000 on that deal. So I wanted to go after number two. I was advised that would not be the proper thing to do. The proper thing to do would be to accept the list as presented from the, from the committee and then set a budget on it and let them move into negotiations with the top pick. And if they can't get something negotiated, they can move into negotiations with the second person in line. So that was the why I came up with that motion.
Okay. Matt, do you want to make a comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown, our planning manager, let me know yesterday, he checked the DEO website and they had posted those who had been awarded and we were not awarded for that grant. So it will be 100% covered out of general fund.
Well, under discussion, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I think this is tremendously important and it is a little more money than what we thought it was going to be. We budgeted 75 for this thing and it turned out being 125. That's partially why I would like to reduce it to 125. I think, I think we can get it done for that, but we are going to have to come up with that other $50,000.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other questions? Okay, so we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner and a proper second by Commissioner Rawls and this is to hold this to what, 125?
125.
125. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay. All right, so that moves item G forward, or excuse me, I forward. And I just wanted, for clarification, can I ask Angie to come up on the derelict vessel removal? I noticed in my packet that with the information given to me, that it looked like the pictures on the second, on the second vessel was not the correct one. And I wanted to make sure everybody understood which vessels these were actually going to remove. And Angie clarified that for me.
Good morning. We're going to be removing two vessels. I think what you got perhaps in the original submittal was a vessel that was partially submerged. That is not correct. That vessel actually was on private property, so that's not eligible under this particular grant. And I think it's been removed anyway. So the two that we're going to be removing are the Chris Craft, the 55-foot motor yacht, which is located on or near Hog Island, west of Hog Island, and then the vessel, I believe it's referred to as a Holiday Rambler.
I'll speak.
And I can find that location for you.
That's the one near Murphy's Island, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it is. That's the 39-foot one. They're both quite large vessels with the, with the Chris Craft being at 55 foot and the Holiday Mansion at 39. But they'll be, we're comfortable that they'll be taken care of very quickly. We've utilized this company in the past and they're, they're very good at disposing of these, providing proper documentation, that they have done their due diligence, and then will be reimbursed properly.
Okay, and Angie, this is funded by the fishing fund, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
And you fund it fully and then?
We will be reimbursed 75%. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, the, I actually had a concern about this too, but not in this light. My concern was that we were going to fund it from the fishing fund. And I think that we have, we have been discussing taking the fishing fund and using it for a capital project somewhere down the line. I was asked yesterday, not asked, but advised yesterday, that proper, the proper way they felt to do this, staff would, they felt would be to go ahead and approve it, pay for it from the fishing fund and because we feel like we're going to have to come up with additional monies for the boat ramp anyhow, so we would just do it minus this $16,000. And then that's what the fish, part of what the fishing fund is allowed to do is pay for derelict vehicles or vessels.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Exactly. Okay. Okay. Commissioner Harvey?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to echo the same comments, Commissioner Turner, because that was one of the questions I had. And it was good to see that we're going to be looking at if they need it, we're going to put that money back in some case on another project. So thank you, Commissioner Turner, for bringing that up.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Angie.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item J.
Okay, we've got a proper motion to approve item J and a proper second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, item J passes. Okay, we'll move down to item seven, Mr. Tim Smith.
Mr. Chairman, we still got E and F.
The most important ones. I'll turn it over to staff.
Yes, sir. I'm going to have Mr. Reynolds in the presentation this morning. Ms. Papel has had a little bit of dental work done, so Matt's going to take over and do items. I think you're going to do them and order F and then E, Matt?
That's correct. We're going to start with page 53 of the agenda. I believe that's item F.
Yes.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I need to go ahead and read the summary into the record in order to be in compliance. So we'll start on page 53. In accordance with Florida statutes 129.03, parent three, the county budget officer, after tentatively ascertaining the proposed fiscal policies of the board for the next fiscal year, shall prepare and present to the board a tentative budget for the next fiscal year for each of the funds provided in this chapter, including all estimated receipts, taxes to be levied, and balances expected to be brought forward, and all estimated expenditures, reserves, and balances to be carried over at the end of the year. The tentative total county budget, as shown on attachment one, there are no changes from the budget presented in workshop on July 15, 2019. That was last Monday. While there are many additional changes in the numbers in the coming weeks, the budgets will remain in balance. The proposed fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget is balanced and reflects the proposed general property tax millage rate of 9.5946, which is the same millage rate as the current year. The proposed fire MSTU millage rate is 1.1000 mils, which is the same as the current rate. The calculated rollback rates are general fund 9.2489 mils and the fire tax MSTU 1.0592 mils. At the same meeting, the board is setting the proposed millage rates, which will go into the trim notice to all taxpayers. Again, the fiscal year 2019, 2020 proposed general property tax millage is 9.5946 and the proposed fire tax MSTU millage is 1.1000.
Okay. All right, any other, any questions or discussion? Okay. The board would, the chairman would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval as presented.
No, no motion now. Wait. Recommended action, none required, see next agenda.
Gotcha. Okay.
I will go ahead and read the next summary for agenda item E, which is page 52, and I'll go ahead and read that into the agenda as well. In accordance with Florida statute 200.065, parent two, parent A, four, parent B, within 35 days of certification of value pursuant to subsection one, each taxing authority shall advise the property appraiser of its proposed millage rate, of its rollback rate computed pursuant to subsection one, and of the date, time, and place at which a public hearing will be held to consider the proposed millage rate and the tentative budget. This information will be included in the trim notice mail to all property owners by the property appraiser in August. The proposed fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget is balanced and reflects the millage rate recommended to remain at the 9.5946 for the general property tax millage. The fire MSTU millage is recommended to remain at 1.1000 mils. The calculated rollback rates respectively are 9.2489 and 1.0592. The BOCC is required to accept by motion the tentative budget and set the proposed millage rates. In a separate motion, the board is required to set the date, time, and place for both the tentative and final budget hearings and the adoption of the final millage rates and budget. So the recommended action is, number one, by motion, to accept the tentative budget and set the proposed millage rates as previously read. And then the second one will be by motion, set the date, time, and place. So if we can have a motion to accept the tentative budget and setting the proposed millage rates, that would be.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the tentative budget and set the proposed millage rates.
Second, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard, a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Comment, Commissioner Harvey?
Matt, do they have to be at 5:05 or can we put them to 6:00 in case the public wants to come to that?
I believe as, as long as they are after 5:00 PM, then it can be at, at any time. But yes, that, the one caveat, and I believe is we would have to, to double check, or we already have double checked, is that we cannot conflict with the school board. They get first choice on the, the dates and times of the two public hearings, or at least the first public hearing.
The school board has already chosen the Tuesday before. I've already let the property appraiser know, but he hasn't sent the trim notice yet, so we can change it to 6:00.
It's whatever the board, I just wanted to ask that question.
So we're at the will of the board.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I think last year when we had this budget, it lasted like three and a half minutes, this budget meeting. So, you know, I'm not saying that people don't want to come and show up. I mean, that's fine, but the longer we keep staff here in the evening, the more overtime we're going to have to pay and the more cost benefit there is. I know we got to have it in the evening, but, you know, I would rather keep it at the 5:05 unless you just are real hard on that and then I'll along with you.
Either that or give them time off at the end of the week, let them leave early on Friday. Cinco de Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You want to split the middle and have it at 5:30?
No, no. This is fine.
We'll, we'll do that in the next motion.
One person showed up last time.
Right.
I think that was it, so, okay, so we'll have it at 5:05.
Well, there'll need to be another motion. This motion was just for the tentative budget and the millage rate.
Okay, so we've got a proper, so we're working on number one right now.
Correct, yes, sir.
So we've got a proper motion and a proper second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I move by motion to set the date and time and place for the tentative budget hearing is Tuesday, September 10, 2019, at 5:05 in this boardroom, and set the date and time and place for the final budget hearing and adoption of the final budget and millage rate as Tuesday, September 24, 2019, at 5:05 PM in this boardroom.
Second.
We've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes, so E and F pass. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, here anyways.
Thank you. Okay, and now we'll move to the Honorable Tim Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We don't have any items for you today, but I would like to comment on the budget process. I want to thank Administrator Suggs and Matt and Stacy and all the commission for their willingness to really delve into this budget. I know that you folks have met quite extensively as a recipient of some of those budgets to operate my office. Thank you for hearing our needs. I know that you can't meet all the needs that we all have, but since Commissioners, I mean, since Administrator Suggs has been here and with Matt, these budget processes have really enlightened me and a lot of folks on the needs of Park County and the difficulties in meeting those with limited resources. So I wanted to congratulate them and thank all of you for your hard work in that process. And that's all the comments we have. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move down to appointments, starting with Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And may I take a point of privilege here for just a second?
Yes.
I want to publicly apologize for bringing disturbances to this board on a previous appointment I made. I broke my own rules and I broke the rules that I, I teach commissioners throughout the state to interview the people prior to and some of the ones that are leaving. I didn't do that. I brought, I brought, I felt like shame upon us and myself for not following my own rule. There is no policy and procedure, but I should have done a better job and I regret, not the appointment that I made, but I regret the way I did and I apologize to this board and to the family. But moving forward, I have really purposed myself to do a better job and I have interviewed these people that I'm going to recommend. I've even told them of what I expect and given them a handbook to follow that's online and they've also filled out their appointment form online or in paper. So, Mr. Chairman, my first appointment will be for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to replace Fay Sparkman, who passed away and resigned, is Robin Cadel. Robin is a resident of Inilarkin and is willing to serve on that and realizes what he needs to do for that. On the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, I appoint Jean Russell. She's also from the town of Inilarkin to be in replace of Diane Williams, whose term has expired. And last is the Planning Commission, is a very prominent young man who is really coming into his own, Mr. Adam Hemphill, will be taking the place of Chet Barr. And those are my appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Laura, did you get all that? Or tap of the who was doing it, Laura? Okay. All right, these are all district appointments, so we don't need any motions or voting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I, I saw an email during this past week that I think came from Sarah that has asked us to try and fix a value adjusting board appointments for next year that was timed. I think last year Chairman Goddard and Vice Chair Pickens were the two people that were on the value adjustment committee. I didn't know if we wanted to continue. I don't mind at all serving on that if you would like to serve as chair and we'll keep the same thing moving forward as chair and vice chair, if that's what the commission deems. I, I don't, I don't mind not serving either and I think at the last board meeting, Commissioner Harvey also volunteered to do it. So if he feels strongly about it, I'll certainly give him my spot on there with no problem whatsoever.
It's fine. It's fine.
All right.
I think everyone should enjoy that.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, I have no problem serving as, as chair.
Yeah, well, that's what it was last year, chair, vice chair, so.
Exactly, so. And I have also talked to Todd Dixon and he's willing to continue to serve on that board also.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move for you, Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Turner to serve on the value adjustment board.
Second.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, it passes. Any other appointments?
I think that's it for me today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
I have none. I would, Laura, is it possible for you to get me the contact information for Ms. Heinzman?
Okay. All right, Commissioner Goddard.
Okay, I have one. That would be to continue with Robert DeFranco on the Animal Services Advisory Committee. I spoke with him, he's very much, wants to stay in there, he's very much qualified.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard and a proper second by Commissioner Harvey to reappoint Robert DeFranco to the Animal Services Board. Any discussion?
I have a question. Can I recuse myself from this vote?
Is it going to give you any money?
Nope. I would like, I would like to recuse myself from this vote for personal reasons.
What?
To vote on whether to appoint Robert DeFranco to this board or not, I would like to recuse myself from voting.
I think that's a lot of formality, it's based on reasons.
Okay, I'll do that. Do I need to do it now before we do it or?
Sort of.
Okay, all right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
But it's, the biggest problem is the inspectors are overworked over there. There's waiting. There's waiting.
Okay, I'll reconvene our meeting at 10 o'clock, and I spoke with legal counsel, so I've been advised of what I should do. So, anyway, we have a proper motion on the floor by Commissioner Goddard, and a second by, Commissioner Rawls?
Sounds about right.
That was me.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Okay, to reappoint Robert DeFranco to the Animal Services Board. All in favor, indicate by saying...
Under discussion, what did you do?
I'm going to...
Did you recuse?
No, I cannot, I cannot recuse myself, because there's no personal gain or anything by him being nominated to this board. I just, this is a personal issue, so, and I want to get this over with, so, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes three to two, with Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Pickens dissenting. Okay, we need to move back to the Value Adjustment Board. In my haste, we did not renominate Todd Dixon to that board.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we nominate Todd Dixon to the Value Adjustment Board.
I'll second. Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, Mr. Dixon is on that board. Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
One last question before we, if we could, before we leave appointments.
Okay.
I thought we had another at-large on the Animal Services, other than the one we just filled. Wasn't that guy already on Animal Services, and he turned out? Last time around, we had an additional one that hadn't been filled yet, I thought. Are we full now on Animal Services?
Still missing that, right?
Well, last time, last time around, I appointed, I think, Scott Brahman at-large, and Charles Harrington as the district appointment on that committee, but I thought we had one left, but I could certainly be in error, but was that the...
I thought it was Robert DeFranco was the last one.
Well, I didn't... Okay, well, he was, he was, he had not turned out last month yet, had he?
DeFranco?
Yeah.
Yes, he'd been expired for probably some nine, it might have been a few months.
Okay, so that probably was the other appointment then, and they just didn't have his name wrote down last week, huh?
Veterinarian, or, we have one more at-large that is required to be a veterinarian or a...
Or a large, a large animal, that's why I put Brahman on there, because he was, he has large animal experience, he's a rancher.
So, that fills that...
Yeah, but, yeah, but I think we're done now, right? Okay, all right, thank you, that's the only question I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, we'll move down to closing comments. County Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to apologize for my misspeak earlier. Didn't realize when the question come up about the DEO grant, that we were notified late yesterday afternoon. I want to thank Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Brown for having that information for you here this morning to make your decision, so thank you for that, and again, my apologies. Also, just want to give a brief update. As you know, we were out of town last week, I was in DC, pushing the water infrastructure project out there for Federal Point and Dunn's Creek. Had good meetings up in DC. We're gonna continue to push that project, I think it's a very worthwhile project for both of those areas, that seem to be a flood-prone area when we have major storm events, so we're gonna continue doing that. And also, just on a personal note, I don't know if you've ever had a chance to do it, you know, a few months back, had an opportunity to play just pure tourist in DC, and went to Arlington, to tour Arlington Cemetery, and watched the program for the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. But this last week, had an opportunity to go up there for a memorial service for a family member, retired Colonel from the Army, who was a CPA. If you hadn't had an opportunity to see that, the respect, the honor that they have for our servicemen and women, it's just, you know, it's one of those things that you just don't realize until you see it in person, and I just want to say to all of our men and women in the service, thank you for your service, and that, you know, having a father who was a disabled veteran, and a brother who served in two tours in Vietnam, I get it. And it was just a proud moment for me and my family to be able to witness that. I just wanted to share that this morning, and let you know that the meetings in DC did go well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Administrator Suggs, and thank you for your work in Washington. Okay, we'll move down to our new county attorney, Mr. Joe DiNovo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to the board and our county administrator for selecting me as county attorney. It's a privilege and honor to represent the Board of County Commissioners and serve the people of Putnam County. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Castleberry?
I wish him well, hope he has a great success.
I told him he needed to get to know you yesterday. My first comment with him was he needed to know Russ Castleberry, so he filled him in and Tabitha, so, anyway, thank you. Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Comments. Closing comments, we'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
Well, I always have a few. One, normally, you know, I always say, get out and look at Putnam County, because Putnam County, to me, still is great. But also, go out and look at some surrounding areas. I was in Flagler, South Flagler, this weekend, and I was stunned, I actually went to Bulo Ruins. Now, I've lived here all my life, well, we'll say that most of my life, because my life's not over yet, but I've never been there.
We're glad to hear that, too.
I have never, ever been there, and it was just a great experience, you know, there's so many things right around us that we just don't go see. No excuses, like, for me, I just had other things to do, but this time, I went over and looked at it, it was very eye-opening, I enjoy the history. Also, I love watching the sunrise on the beach. But one thing that came to me was our sunrise looking across this river. It's unbelievable, that's gorgeous, I love to just sit down there sometimes and just watch the sunrise, cross the bridge, it's really great, you've just got to get out and see what we have here, it's fantastic. Also, while I still have the mic, on our meeting, we, we're looking at an evening meeting, possibly on the 6th of August, out in Interlaken, and I don't know if it has to be approved, or needs to at least be brought to the board's attention here beforehand, if there's any conflict, because we each were trying to do districts. This one happened to be, Mr. Harvey and myself would be able to do ours out in the Interlaken area on 6th, at, what'd we look at, about 6 o'clock?
I think so, yes.
And just, just need to be, you know, that everybody's on board with that, if there's any problem with it, you know...
What, I mean, what, Town Hall?
August 6th, Town Hall meeting at 6 o'clock.
What day is that?
That's a...
Tuesday.
That's a Tuesday.
Okay. Yeah, I guess you just have to get with Laura and Administrator Suggs, and get it advertised, and...
At the community center? At the community center. Any comments, is that all good? Thumbs up?
That's good, yeah.
Yeah, we'll work, if it's the will of the commission, I'll pick that date and time, and we'll go ahead and start working on it. Okay, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to...
And if that date and time, for some reason, messes up, would you just work with him, or him, or both, or whatever, and just pick another date that suits them for their Town Hall meeting?
We just, the only thing we need to do is get it advertised, and make sure that we have proper notification and proper setup, we'll have to have Mr. Smith's staff assist us with it, you know, for recording, no? Can't do it. I'm going to work for Mr. Smith, but no, we'll take care of that, and make sure it's properly advertised, and take care of what you need to have taken care of. By being properly advertised means any commissioner can show up. That is correct. Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, and this will take care of District, District 5 and 4, right?
No.
Correct, or just?
Yes, 4 and 5.
4 and 5 for that, okay. We're planning one on District 1, sometime in August also. Okay, okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just really want to talk about, I don't want to, I didn't want to pull Item L today, but it's great to see that we've got a CDBG Disaster Recovery Grant to work on the flooding mitigation and the road on St. John's Avenue. There will be more construction going on down there, but I think that's a good thing for us to do, and really appreciate Matt and Julianne last week, I had some questions that needed to be answered. If you know, no's not a good answer for me, so we hastened over and over and over, and we, they understood my point, and I understood their point, and it's just great to have staff that you can deal with in that arena. And Mr. Suggs, you should be proud of the people that you've hired to accommodate this county and to work hard, they worked diligently while you were gone, but they do that all the time, but they really represent you well, and for us to be able to have them there. But we look forward to what's gonna happen down on St. John's Avenue. Mr. Chairman, next Monday night, Board Hemp as a Crop Meeting, again hemp as a crop, that's gonna be at the Ag Center at 6 o'clock over 111 Yelvington Road in East Palaca. We've invited St. John's County, Flagler County to come, it's a tri-county and Putnam County, to listen to Mrs. Holly Bell, the Cannabis Czar for the State of Florida, who is going to educate, and hopefully give some ideas about, for local farmers or growers who want to get into the hemp as a crop. This is not marijuana, has nothing to do with that, it is hemp, and you could smoke it all day long and get sick, that's about all you can do. But people are using it in houses, they're using it for clothes, and it's got great possibilities to be a, an alternative crop for our area growers. So, look forward to seeing everybody there on the 29th, and I do want to say one thing, I really appreciate our leadership on this board. Served on here, I'm the longest-serving commissioner now on the board, and Commissioner Pickens, I just think you're doing a fine job, and I want the public to know, you really steer this ship well. I know sometimes you might feel like you don't, but you do, and you're doing a tremendous job, okay? So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, I do sometimes feel like I'm spinning my wheels, but anyway, I appreciate the comments. And on the lines of the seminar they're gonna have Monday, I've already had somebody reach out to me and ask me about that, about the hemp class, and so, so hopefully it'll be well-attended.
Yes, sir.
Because there's a lot of agricultural property, I know, in the south end, that is not really being used anymore for growing ferns, and it still has irrigation, the wells, and those type things, so maybe suited, you know, for that type of a crop, so, okay, Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also welcome Joe, Lawyer Joe, to the, to the commission, to the commission lawyer seat. We made it all the way through the first meeting, it looks like, without having a scrap, so I think that's gonna be some kind of a great deal, all right. When it comes to paying for our new consultant that we're gonna hire, we don't know which one it is yet, we have, we don't have that budgeted until next year, or is it in this year?
We have built that $75,000 in next year's budget, starting October 1, but if we do incur any costs this fiscal year, we can amend the budget and then adjust it as we get closer to finalizing it in September.
I don't want, this commissioner doesn't want to wait till October to start this process. As soon as we get somebody on board, we want to kick this pig, so, we, I mean, get it started as quickly as we can, so, you know, if we need to, if we need to, you know, to give further instruction, or if you need to bring it, please, quickly as possible, I'm just saying, don't let the money hold this up, it needs, like, get going as quickly as possible, so, the, and I, I want to reach out to Public Works, I give them hell all the time, and they know it, but they also deserve my thanks. They, we had a problem on Works Road in San Mateo, where the delivery of the mail had been stopped, they came out that day and fixed it, where they would crank delivery back up for them people's mail, and it wasn't even in District 1. So, so for that press, I appreciate y'all doing that, and helping those people out, they were in bad shape, so, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm, we don't kick a pig here.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Turner, and I want to first welcome our new attorney to our family, and I look forward to working with you, and this is definitely your first meeting, and if you haven't realized, that Commissioner Turner speaks San Mateo. Which is good, it's easy to understand, so you can pick up on it in a hurry, but welcome. And also, I'll thank press, we had a little road emergency in District 1 last week, and they took care of it in a, in a really short manner, so, and he's looking for a long-term repair for that particular situation on Junction Road, but I appreciate your service, and all your employees. Last thing I want to say is I want to thank staff, Administrator Suggs, and Matt, and Stacy, for the budget. It's a lot of work, I know you're glad to, at this point, it still is a working document, you know, that can change as we move forward, but at least we're to this point, and I appreciate all the staff's work. We have a 2 o'clock transportation meeting, is there any further business coming for this board?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, one thing, I noticed our new city administrator, I think, just showed up, maybe he could walk up and introduce himself. I think he's the new, the city's new interim administrator.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, and I'm Lee Garner, if you call me Elman Garner, I know you're from North Carolina, but if Lee Garner, it's somewhere else, or if you call me Booty, it was somebody in Vietnam with me. That's where I introduce myself, but I'm glad to be here, to do what I can, I've met Commissioner Saul the other night at our board meeting, and look forward just being part of the community as long as I'm needed, you know, they're going out for nationwide search for, for a manager, it went out on the 17th, the ad went out on the 17th for 30 days, and then, who knows, I may be here for three months, five months, six months, we've got nine months written in my agreement, so who knows what, how long I'll be here, but I'm here to serve the people of Palatka and Putnam County any way I can, and, and I thank everybody for welcoming me here, I apologize for being late this morning, but, you know, city managers and county managers, they always have personnel problems, and one cropped up this morning, so, that's part of the game, but I'm glad to be here, and I look forward to working with you and getting involved with the county. I see Terry again, it's been several years since we've seen each other, but I'll get with you after, after the meeting, hopefully, for a few minutes, and, and one thing I'd say here, I'm new to the job, but I tell you, working together, I hope we can work on and getting the animal control situations fixed up. That's one thing that I see, I think is a need, and I'd like to ask all of us, let's work together, and see if we can get animal control taken care of, and thank you, I'm here available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for anybody, if I can help anybody.
Okay, all right, thank you, welcome. I see that's a rotary shirt?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, yes. Rotary shirt, yes, Don is gonna take me to the lunch, lunch meeting today, and then I'm gonna visit the sunrise, and see which, which one I like the best.
I can answer that question.
One in Interlaken, too. Interlaken, right out west of here, there's one out there.
Out there, too, well, I'll try to get around to all of them, and, because I've been...
Mr. Chairman, you got one.
I was gonna let y'all get through, and when you visited those, if you'd like to come see the Crescent City Rotary Club, I'll be glad to invite you there. Mayor Brett Peterson is right behind you there from Crescent City, he's the immediate past president of that club, so...
Well, I'm, I'm taking leave, I'm Assistant District Governor for, I've been 13 years as AG in District 6940, over in the Panhandle, so, but I'm here, I've been president, immediate past president, and president-elect of our club, so, there's a couple of us that alternate every two years, I'm president for two years, he's president for two years, so, we alternate that, keep rotary going.
You all are there, too.
Okay, well, thank you, I'm thankful for welcoming me here, and I'm glad to be here, and I like to look forward to meeting, work with each one of you, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
It's speaking of personnel problems.
That's fine. Okay, and I like, okay?
I got one question.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
Regarding the save Rodman, or the drawdown of Rodman?
Yeah.
I'd sent an email to Laura, and the response came back, and the question was, is this a private meeting, because he said they would, they want to meet with the stakeholders, and they want to meet with the public. The way I read the email, it sounds like it's a private meeting, so I'm assuming that Commissioner Harvey's gonna be there, so I probably shouldn't be there.
You know, it's, whether we're gonna vote on anything, I, we're not, because that's greenways and trails, but it probably wouldn't hurt to have it advertised, that if somebody else wanted to be there, that we could do that, so that would be a simple solution to that problem.
I thought the email stated, I saw the email Commissioner Rawls was talking about, and I think the email said they didn't want anybody there, they didn't want it to be a public meeting, if I read it right. And they didn't, their public meeting was later in September or something.
Right.
And so, you know, I guess if two commissioners are gonna show up, and they're gonna discuss something that'll come before the board, they can't show up unless the meeting's advertised, so either the commissioners have to show up and not say anything about what's going on, and just listen, or one commissioner needs to show up. Well, I know, that's not gonna happen, not if you and I show up, it ain't gonna happen.
So, they just need to advertise the meeting, when nobody will have to come take notes or anything like that?
Yes, you have to follow the sunshine law, so, properly noticed, more than, than, you know, if you're gonna have two or more commissioners meeting, discussing things that may come before the board, you know, properly advertised, properly noticed.
Is there anything that will come up that might come before this board?
No, sir.
I didn't think so.
I didn't think so either.
So, then we're all right?
Yeah. So, we can just attend, correct?
Unless it's a private meeting.
Okay.
It's a private meeting, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any further business come before this board? We stand adjourned.